Am I safe to begin? All right, I'd like to call to order the July 16, 2024, meeting of the West Palm Beach Planning Board. Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Andres Paradella.
Here.
Deborah Rain.
Here.
Peter Piffco. Stephen Mayans.
Here.
Will Caronte.
Here.
Patrick Mayfield.
Here.
Here. Jean Marcel Jr.
Present.
So which one, isn't it? And you hope, did you call the other gentleman? I didn't hear.
Sorry, and Sam Fish.
All right, next order of business is approval of the May 21, 2024 minutes. Has everyone had the opportunity to review them? Are there any changes or corrections? And if not, I'm looking for a motion for approval.
A move for approval?
We have a motion, have we a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next on our agenda is the report of the planning staff. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Rick Green, Development Services Director, filling in for Angela Van tonight. But just a couple of quick updates since our last meeting, which was two months ago. You may remember the zoning code text amendment that we made for the Northwood Mixed Use District to permit motor vehicle sales and rental no service. This was the golf carts that were going to be sold in the N-Mud District. It was approved by the Planning Board unanimously, six to zero. We brought it to the City Commission for second reading on June 10th, and it was also approved unanimously. I also wanted to mention that we are in the process of updating our downtown master plan. We issued an RFP several weeks ago. The bids were due today. I didn't check with our procurement official as to how many firms may have submitted, but a committee that I and others are serving on will review the proposals that have come in, and then we'll make a recommendation in the weeks to come. And then any code change that comes out of that work certainly will be brought to this board for discussion before it goes to the City Commission. And with that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation.
All right, any questions, Mr. Green? Thank you. Next on the agenda are remarks by the chairperson, of which I have none. So then becomes a declaration of ex parte communications. And let me begin by saying that I have had no ex parte communications. I receive no written communications. I have conducted no investigations. I've made no site visits. I receive no expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made a part of the record. Let me start with you, Andre.
As to the matter of any agenda items presented this evening, I have not had any ex parte communications, nor have I had any, received any written communications, or conducted an investigation, or made a site visit, or received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record, and my decision will be made solely on the information presented tonight.
Thank you, Deborah.
As it relates to agenda items to be presented here this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. And I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you, Peter.
As to all matters in tonight's agenda, I have not had any ex parte communications. I have not received written communications, and I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all matters on the agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Patrick?
As to the matter of all agenda items this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit, and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
That's him. Jean.
As to all matters on the agenda, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted a site visit. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
As to all of the matters on the agenda this evening, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received any written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received any expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you so much. That then brings us to the swearing in of speakers. Would everyone who plans to speak or offer testimony this evening please stand up and raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. And next on our agenda are continued cases, of which there are none. That then brings us to Planning Board case PB 950 WWW. May we hear from the applicant?
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, Roger Ramden with the Office of Schutzenbowen, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm here to present tonight a request for a major PD amendment for the Rosemary Square Development Regulations, specifically the East Sub Area. You may recall that the East Sub Area was previously approved for twin office tower buildings, Buildings A and Building B. And specific to this request is the podium height for Building B. We're asking to increase the height of the podium only from 70 feet to 80 feet, which is a 10-foot increase, and from five stories to seven stories. A little bit of background as to how this came around. The surrounding districts, both the, and you can see from this slide, both the QBDA 25 and the QGD 1025 both have a maximum podium height of 80 feet. When we originally proposed a language in the Rosemary Square Development Regulations, we had initially proposed 70 feet. And as we went through the site plan and process, we proposed to increase that to 80 feet. Another reason why we had to do that is because the parking level had to be increased because we had a need for additional self-parking spaces. The mechanical lifts, we worked with staff to reduce the number of mechanical lifts, and the mechanical lifts, as you may be aware, are double stacked. So with the increase in self-parking spaces, that triggered the need for additional parking spaces, and therefore more parking levels. Part of the reason is because the valet parking operations for the mechanical lifts is required for the proper and safe use of the mechanical parking. And also because this is an office building, you have the majority of people arriving within a one-hour timeframe or so, between eight and nine, and between 4:30 and 5:30 leaving. And there wouldn't be enough valet to quickly turn around the cars for those employees. So that also triggered the need for this additional height increase. This is the red line of the changes. Basically, it occurs in three places within the sub-area regulations, and it's directly related to the increase from 70 feet to 80 feet for podium, for the podium in Building B. So as you can see from this slide, it's just a red line strike through to increase from five to seven stories, 70 to 80 feet. The parking uses setback was increased to allow for some additional landscaping on the upper levels and not have the parking in those areas. And again, the podium height increase from, in this area, from 60 to 80, only because there's a lot coverage calculation was also affected by this calculation, by this change. Major PD amendments are required to demonstrate compliance with Section 9432A, and we believe we comply with all of them. Staff agrees with us. And with that, we do respectfully request a recommendation of approval for this major PD amendment. And also, as you can tell from the staff report, staff also recommends approval on this request. Be happy to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to this request.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Go ahead, Patrick.
So I imagine the overall height of the structure is not changing.
That's correct, just the podium height is changing.
Okay.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Anything else?
I'm so sorry. Any questions? No, okay. All right, thank you, may we hear from staff?
Good evening, for the record, Eric Schneider, Principal Planner. So I'm not going to go through a full presentation here. Roger covered the high points of what was going on. I do want to address one issue. The height of the building is actually going to increase by about 10 feet because what they're doing, if you could look at the slide, the left image is the existing building. The right image would be the building with the additional 10 feet. So you see that little striped area down there, and the bottom, that would be the podium. So the blue line across there is the existing podium height. On the left-hand side, on the right-hand side, it raises 10 feet. The podium goes for the entire length of the building, so the entire building will go up. It does not exceed the height of what was approved by the sub-area regulations, which the Planning Board approved, I don't know, about eight months, nine months, maybe even over like two years ago, but the site plan, which was approved by the Planning Board and recommended, and then approved by the City Commission about eight months to a year ago. So yes, there will be an increase in the height of the building for the 10 feet that they're putting in. So as Roger said, staff has reviewed the case. It does comply with all of the standards in the code. Available for any other questions.
Okay, any questions of staff?
I do. Does this have any bearing on the way they, people be entering the building? Is this?
No, so the tower that you see on the left, and one of the things that, the way that the downtown master plan was set up, we've got the podium, which is typically has more, and then the tower, which is, as you get over a certain point, it goes up, and in this case, it's going to change from 80 to 70 feet to 80 feet. So you see, the building doesn't change. And if you looked at this building, you'd probably think, oh, the whole tower is that part on the left of the building, and then the garage is on the right. Well, technically, the podium goes the entire width of that first levels, the first, up to the blue line in those, in those, in those buildings, you know, in the pictures. So nothing changes other than it adds 10 feet. You'll see, you can see kind of on the, in the drawings, those little tiny boxes on the ground floor. Those are the doors, they stay in the same place. The entry to the garage stays in the same place. Now, due to the design of the building, there probably will be an administrative change required for the internal workings of the garage to make it work better. And I don't remember, and I didn't have it in here, but if you remember that the parking they did was a lift system. So there's two parking spaces basically above each other. The valet drives it in, the car lifts up, and then the car parks, and then they move it around. That saves a lot of space because those two cars stacked on top of each other aren't as much as two floors of parking stacked on top of each other. So it also, those have to be on a flat level, as you might imagine, as opposed to on a ramp in garages, like a parking garage here, when you guys come in and park, you can park on the ramp. You can't do that on a lift. So the efficiencies of the garage will change, maybe inefficiencies, efficiencies, whatever, however you want to look at it, that they will probably have more of a garage that looks like what you guys parked in tonight, where they can put cars on the ramps. And so internally, it will change. The exterior of the building will look the same, that same screening material. Other than what Roger mentioned in his report, one of the things that we did typically in the downtown master plan, when you get to the tower level, which would be above the blue, we don't allow parking to push out to the property, to the edge of the building. It has to be set back so that it gets a set, so you don't have that parking there, and it's set back. And that's what we've added here, the conditional setback after the 80th floor, or 80th feet level, which would be the top of the, basically the top of the garage. So that will change a little bit in what you see there. So they kind of just rendered this in based on what they had approved, but it will change a little bit, but not drastically. The entrances should, the entrances will all stay the same because those are all waiver, you guys granted, well, they granted waivers on landscaping and so forth when it was originally done. So I hope that answered your question?
Yep.
So I had a question. You have such a good eye for these kind of things, Eric. I still remember the signs, that you saw things that we missed. I personally don't have an issue with this, but should we worry about too much massing if the podium gets higher and the others, the buildings taller?
Well, one of the things that, when we went through this exercise to establish the sub-area requirements, which is the base, what this building was allowed to be built on, we looked at all of those things. I mean, I didn't present it all to you guys, and it probably wasn't even in a lot of your backup material, but we had them do massing studies. And with this application, because I had that concern as well. I mean, they came in at 70, which, you know, feet, which was exciting because the surrounding ones, as Roger said, are 80 to the north, which you have for 360 Rosemary and so forth. So we were happy with that, and it was able to be done because of that lift system. Truthfully, when they proposed 1,000 spaces done as a lift system, I wasn't sure how the heck that was going to work, and it bore out that it wasn't going to work. So if those issues had been worked out a little better from the start, we probably would have come originally with 80 feet, because that would have been consistent with surrounding. We did do some massing studies, looking at it as you look from, from quadrill down into the, into the heart of City Place with the buildings that could be built on the, what's Valley Village now, and what's also on the garage to the south. And you will be seeing an amendment to raise the garage height. This is part one. They, even with this, they can't make up enough parking spaces to make up the 1,300 or whatever spaces they need for these buildings. So they're going to be coming back, and we actually have an application in to put a couple of levels on the garage that, the south, on the south side of Hibiscus. So we're working through some issues with that right now. That's why it hasn't come, I would have liked to have brought it both together, but it just didn't work out that way. So from looking at it, yes, we have done a lot of the different things in design of the regulations so that it wouldn't impact the street level experience or minimize any impact. And that goes back to even pushing it back at the 80th, at the 80-foot height, because then you don't have the covering of the garage pushing out. It's pushed back. So we're trying to do, looking at it the best we can. We've got, I mean, they give us a lot of drawings to verify and prove kind of what we're looking at, and so we don't create problems, or try not to create problems. I don't know if we can always say we don't.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you. Any other questions of staff?
So you mentioned that it's going from five stories to seven stories.
Correct. So the way that the downtown is set up, and then some of our mixed-use districts, it's a combination of the number of stories and the feet in height. And this is to give a relationship between the perceived height of a building. You don't have a lot of stories, like a lot of levels crammed in, in that 70 feet. Given that this is a parking garage, typically it would be, for 80 feet, it's five stories still. That's the downtown master plan requirement. Given that the majority of this is going to be parking, and what you don't see in this building is, even that red, that's a parking level that goes through. Most of those levels in the podium are parking, other than the base. The first two levels are 20 feet of retail, and then you have another 20-foot retail below that in the building. And then the most of the rest of those levels are parking levels, which are going to be lower when they don't have the lifts on them. So adding in two more levels of there to go from five to seven allows those levels of parking to absorb those at-grade parking spaces and not the lifts. You can't tell from this building, and if you, where the dashed line is, that still the exterior features of the building and the screening will make it look like it's five stories because they're going to keep those cornice lines the same. We've talked to them about when they do come in to make sure that it still looks like the same building, and it reads the same as those are just five stories in there. I hope that answered your question?
So it's five stories and 70 feet now. They're going to seven stories and 80 feet.
Correct. And because those are high stories, because they did the lifts, they're 12 to 16-foot stories or something like that, with, for the mechanical above the lifts, like the fire suppression and everything. Those floors are going to be shrunk to just under 10 feet now. So in that 80 feet, there's going to be more stories can be put in there. And typically, that's common with parking levels. Parking levels are shorter than levels like this because you have a lot more. People don't want to be in the, you know, going to the old, what's, I know I've been in the Trump Tower once, and you go down those hallways, and I don't know if anybody in there, they're really low because they were built back in, that building was built in the 70s. You go into any high-rise now, you get a higher feeling because it's up. It's just the way the buildings are built with a higher floor to ceiling. And so parking lots don't need that, so that's why you can put more in if it's an ex, just parking. So did that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay, any other questions of staff?
My last question.
In the past, we, the city has implemented active elevations on some of the parking garages, like the Cohen Building, for example. What's the approach here with this garage?
Okay, so what you don't see here is both towers. And so there is an active use percentage across the entire site. The western tower has no parking built into it. It's completely active all the way around. This tower does have some areas, like it's all active down here on the ground floor. There are areas in here where the garage cuts into the building. I believe I showed that in your site, if you look in your site plan, on your packet.
We didn't get anything.
You didn't see that?
No, elevations, nothing.
The, well, the, there's, there's on page four, there's a page that kind of shows where the garage, actually, at this, on this level, it goes all the way through the building from what you would perceive as the garage to this side here. They did get some waivers for a reduction in the amount of active use on floors four and five in the existing building, which now will become four, five, six, seven because they're twice as much, because they're cutting another floor in on each one of those. So those do extend up, so there is some parking in this element of the building. However, what they've done is they've got spandrel glass that continues the glazing pattern from the tower, which is all open, and from the base up so that it reads that it is still a, you know, office building. And you can't tell that there's lights, like it's a parking garage behind it. So that was one of the things that they did to mitigate that additional non-active use on the floors.
Because our package didn't have the elevations.
Yeah, well, because that was all approved in the previous application, so that's why I put just what the floor looked like, the floor plate, on that one, where it showed it going through.
All right. Any other questions for staff?
I just want to confirm that there's no net change to the parking in the, in both buildings.
Until we see what the final layout is, I can't answer if there's going to be more or less parking. Presumably, there will be less parking because it's going to be not as efficient to do the single, the levels versus the two cart lifts. However, there is a minimum parking requirement for the two buildings that are on this site. They are required to meet that, and they will not get any approval until they verify that they have met that. Now, the two buildings that have been approved, the garages that they have on site now, I said 1,300 parking spaces or something are required. There's probably 40 or 50 parking spaces that they physically could not fit in this and are on the Hibiscus Garage, which is on the south side of Hibiscus. The garage that goes between Okeechobee and Hibiscus, that will be dedicated to this building. And just like the office tower that is on Okeechobee Boulevard now, the one that's been there for 15 years, that has parking in the building on the first couple of levels. You might not be able to tell because of the way we designed, it was designed, but it doesn't park its entire parking in that building. There are 250, 300 spaces on the rooftop of that garage that are behind a gate that the people that park in the office building park there. I guess the people that have to park out on the, they have a card, and then at night, those get lifted up so that the retail and entertainment people can park there, and it gets shared. And that's the same scenario that we envision here. Why I also said you'll be seeing an amendment for the south, the other garage having levels added because they anticipate that they will need more parking spaces in the existing garage and have it have a couple of levels added to it. So that will be the same kind of thing you'll probably see. I think they've, I think we're looking at 80 feet on that one as well. They're against the railroad tracks, so.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff? And if not, we'll go to the public. Does anyone wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we'll bring it back to the board. Does anyone have any concerns or issues with the application? Looking around, not seeing anyone. All right, then I'm looking for a motion for approval.
And you do have the motion page, it was at your desk when I, when you got there, so it's.
At the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission, approval of Planning Board case number 950 WWW. A request by Roger Ramden, Schutzenbowen, on behalf of City Place Retail LLC for the approval of a major planned development amendment to the City Place Commercial Plan Development to amend the Rosemary Square East Sub Area Building Envelope table within the Rosemary Square Development Regulations related to increase the height of the podium for Building B within the sub-area. The motion is based on the testimony presented at the hearing along with the application submitted and the staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding of fact that each of the applicable criteria in Sections 94-32 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations have been met.
Second.
We have a motion, have we a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. I think that then brings us to Planning Board cases number 1984 and 1984A. And may we hear from the applicant?
Good evening. For the record, Joanie Brinkman with Urban Design Studio, on behalf of the applicant. In this case, it's actually the Shops at the Press, but I'm here as well representing Palm Beach Atlantic University. And I will start by giving the presentation. What's before you tonight here is a two-part request. One, for a small-scale land use plan amendment. From part of the parcel that we're going to be reviewing tonight is already commercial east. Part of it is commercial, so we will be bringing the entire parcel into the commercial east land use category with a further rezoning to CPD, Commercial Plan Development, and a parking waiver. Again, the request, as I just stated, is land use change and rezoning. The parking waiver requires, represents a required parking for the overall development of 877 spaces with 749 proposed, resulting in a waiver request of 128 spaces. I'll get back into the surplus as we go farther into the presentation, but we actually have a surplus of parking based on our parking study. There are no revisions to the approved site plan in regards to site layout, in regards to constructing any additional score footage. It remains as that property is today from a physical standpoint. One of the reasons that we're here today for the rezoning to CPD is the code in the city allows planned developments to permit uses as outlined in the development order. Palm Beach Atlantic University has leased space in the old Palm Beach Post Building, the office. Palm Beach Atlantic University has leased space in the old Palm Beach Post Building, the office building on the property, and intends on utilizing it for a master's program for physical, for physician assistance. And that use is technically not allowed in the CG zoning district. So by going to CPD, we're allowed to request, and staff is supporting this use, to be permitted at this property. For those of you who may not be familiar, this property is located at the southeast corner of Belvedere and Dixie Highway. You'll see at the northeast corner of the property, the most recent building constructed on-site is the new Starbucks. The warehouse building at the south end of the property contains various uses today, such as Joseph's and Pink Steakhouse. Recently, Jim went in there. And then on the west portion of the property is a large parking lot. The office employees currently are using that parking lot via a pedestrian bridge with an elevator. As part of our original development order, we actually eliminated vehicular access across the railroad tracks. And so this, the pedestrian bridge was created at some expense. But it allows that additional surplus parking to be used by the office employees. This just shows the illustrative graphic of the existing layout and the buildings. Again, the office building where the PBAU educational facilities will be located is at the center of the site. Just showing our approved site plan. Again, nothing is changing on the approved site plan in regards to the physical layout of the site. The staff has looked at this request. We are in compliance with the standards required in your zoning code, and staff is recommending approval of all these requests. Again, the waiver is for a hundred-and-twenty-eight parking spaces, based on the parking study provided by Kimley Horn and Associates. There are, the university is using various mitigation techniques to make sure that there is still a surplus, at the end of the day, of fourteen spaces, when the peak hour use of the property is being utilized and the students are there. They also have a shuttle program, and they have parking spaces available at the Rinker Campus there on Parker, which they will utilize if necessary. There is also a really attractive bus shelter that was constructed as part of the press facility out front on Dixie Highway that'll be utilized. When we came in through with the original approval, the staff also required us to create a multimodal facility for future scooters and things like that to recharge. That's right in front of Joseph's, as well as, again, they have the pedestrian connection to the parking lot to the west. The parking waiver has three criteria, at least three criteria we need to comply with, which your staff has reviewed and agreed we do. We are not requesting more than a thirty percent reduction to the required parking. We conform to the concepts of new urbanism, based on the pedestrian orientation of the development, as well as the pedestrian access to the parking to the west. And empirical evidence in the staff, in the parking report assessment prepared by Kimley Horn, was reviewed, accepted, and approved by your staff. So what we were requesting your support on today is approval of the small-scale land use plan amendment on approximately eight-point-three-nine acres. Again, the property frontage along Dixie Highway at a depth of about a hundred-and-fifty feet already contains, already possesses the Commercial East land use. It's compatible with Commercial East in the area. A lot of redevelopment's been going on in that area. So it's only three, eight-point-three-nine acres being, having the land use change applicable to it. And then the rezoning to the Commercial Plan Development will cover the entire eleven-point-five-seven acres of the overall development. And the school use will be included in the development order as a permitted use. That concludes my presentation. Available for any questions, Kimley Horn's here, Kurt Brown from the university is here, and we would look for your support to this request.
Okay, any questions of the applicant? Let me start down here. Joanie, you have a question?
I have a question.
Yes.
About the surplus parking spaces.
Yes.
What is that total number of surplus spaces?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Mm-hmm.
So even with that, it's still more than a hundred spaces short of what's required.
Well, with the, Stephanie from Kimley can speak to that if necessary. But the way that the parking study does, it assesses the need and the peak demand. And so at the peak time, correct me if I'm wrong, there would still be a surplus of fourteen spaces that would physically be needed on the site. Is that correct, Stephanie? Okay.
Did that answer your question, Deborah?
It's a little confusing.
Peter?
Joanie, can you talk a little bit about what your experience has been with comparing demand parking versus city requirements?
Well, I, that would probably be a better Stephanie question. But when you say demand versus city requirements, maybe you're referring to properties outside the downtown master plan? And the amount of required parking?
Just regular parking compared to demand parking.
The use of the parking. The physical use of the parking versus what the code requires.
Right.
Well, I know, I haven't really seen any discrepancies in that regard. This is an unusual situation, because of the university itself, having off-site parking and that availability to have the shuttle. So I don't know if I'm really the right person to speak to that, but I haven't really seen any real discrepancies. Stephanie, do you have anything to add in that regard?
Good evening. Stephanie Gera, Transportation Engineer with Kimley Horn on behalf of the applicant. What we noticed in this case particularly is that because the university rate doesn't fall within the city's categories for a shared parking study, the city's code does not allow us to take time-of-day reductions to account for variability within the day. So while the base code parking does account for a variety of student count, employee count, and a number of different factors, it doesn't allow for us to consider the reduction based on occupancy at different times of the day, which is what we would typically consider within an overall shared parking.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so what was the date of the parking study?
The parking study was dated March twelfth of this year.
Okay, and based on what tenants occupying the spaces?
It was based on the current occupancy at the time, and then considering that the seventeen-thousand square feet, which was previously considered for office use, would be occupied at the city's rates for university uses.
So the seventeen-thousand square feet is in the main building where Storage of America is?
Yes.
Right, in the main office building of the old Palm Beach Post?
Yes.
Okay. At the time of the study, was Amped Fitness open?
Yes, I believe so, yes.
I'm not actually sure if it was open or not, but it was factored into the parking requirements required for an exercise studio in the shared parking analysis, yes.
Do you know how big the gym is, in terms of square feet?
Thinking it's over thirty thousand.
I believe so.
Yeah, yeah. I have not physically been in there to look at it, so I'm not aware of what the occupancy rate and use, using rate is right now. But I know that the development order actually requires the office component to park on the other lot.
Okay, so their parking, and the graphic that you showed was a little different than the aerial picture that you showed. Is that lot fully paved, striped, and operational right now?
Yes.
Okay. Where are the medical students expected to park?
They should be expected to park, as the other office users are, in the other lot.
Okay. What are peak times, according to your definitions?
So in this case, we found that the peak times for the overall site were between nine AM and four PM on a given weekday. What we were looking at specifically to mitigate the additional demand from university parking requirements based on the city's code, was to limit the university use to what, the number of spaces that would be required under the city's code for office, and provide the remaining code-required parking spaces off-site, which would be accessible via the university's existing shuttle. And that would be provided within the university's existing parking inventory.
So are you saying that you use the office metric instead of what the student metric would be?
In terms of the onsite parking, yes. But in terms of the overall parking, the code-required parking would still be provided, just not all onsite for the university use.
So given the university's future development plans, where is this parking inventory coming from? And where will they be shuttled from?
It was for the Rinker Athletic Campus.
Okay, so they're going to park over by, was it southern and, by the ball fields?
Yes.
Okay, and they're going to be shuttled over there. And then what's the proposed times of classes? Will they be eight AM to eight PM? Will they be later in the day? What's the, what's the game plan there?
I would need to double-check with the applicant to confirm.
Okay.
Hi, Kurt Brown for Palm Beach Atlantic. So this typical program will be an eight-to-five educational time. Typical day for a student would be expected eight to five.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you. Patrick, any questions?
So how much of the, of the students do you anticipate using the shuttle service versus parking onsite?
So what we, what we've worked out with the program in would be that we're going to max out the allowable for the university. In our lease, we're allowed a certain amount of parking that fits within what the application request. And then we do this shuttle. This isn't something new for the university, okay? So I want to give you a little background, so you guys can feel, in case we're in front of you again for something different. So we currently, to meet the demand on campus, we've worked with the city for a couple of years on, every year, we provide a parking study. And that parking study evaluates our demand and how we're going to fulfill that total with meeting the city requirements. So we've partnered with many different, whether it's parking garages, similar to what you were talking about with related, where the building has parking next door, that's not in the building. Similar to that, we shuttle folks to the Rinker Athletic Center now. We shuttle to, an agreement we have with the Lutheran Church on Parker. And we actually want it to be a shuttle to this site for a couple of reasons. They're allowed to run back to the campus to have food at the cafeteria, to use our study rooms on campus and be part of the community. We'd love to house all this stuff on our campus. You know, our goal is not to spread out throughout, too far away from campus, because the synergy is about the students and their culture of the faith-based student body we have. So we run this shuttle. And one of the reasons we picked this building was it was on the same path as the current shuttle. So we didn't have to run another shuttle and put more traffic on, on the roadways. So this is just a part of our normal day-to-day schedule.
And you have a pretty significant ridership on that shuttle service?
Yeah, so we, we track that. We, last year, we had an average one-hundred-and-thirty-five students that were using the rack as their parking. We incentivize the price to park on campus. We've raised the prices on campus to kind of shy people away from bringing cars on campus. And just so you know, we know this is a concern for, in general, just for us and to meet city requirements. We've eliminated freshmen to be allowed to register cars on campus. So we've taken, our enrollment was roughly four-hundred of freshmen last year, and none of them could, were required or could possibly buy a pass on campus. We're looking at increasing that to sophomore if needed. So our flexibility in raising, you know, economically, we can raise the cost, which will drive lower demand on parking or change our policies. So it's a fluid, and we work with the city every August to make sure that that's within the requirements that were provided.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have a question. So I understand that the ask for the parking waiver, what is, I guess, what's the relation between having the school be a tenant in the property and changing the zoning designation from Commercial to Commercial East?
That just bakes the entire property consistent with the underlying land use designation. It makes it cleaner. In your staff report, it actually references the fact that Commercial East does allow for residential. We are not proposing residential with this request. But I think that's one of the reasons the city staff supported it, because of the lack of housing. It does allow for an increased FAR. If, if in the future, they wanted to do something different, the owners would have to come back, do a development order amendment, a major amendment to the plan development, present everything to you again. It's not unlike, I know I represented Palm Coast Plaza a while ago, when they did the exact same thing. They came in and they changed, they changed from Commercial to Commercial East, really just setting up so that in the future, they'd be prepared for redevelopment activities.
But does it have anything to do with the school? It looks like the parking request is being made specifically because of the school being a tenant. So this, they're totally unrelated.
Well, my understanding was that you needed to be CE in order to request the parking waiver, as well as being a CPD, but staff can speak to that.
Okay.
Any other questions of the applicant? And if not, may we hear from staff?
Hi, Anne Volsey for the record, planner. Okay, so Vice Chairman, you had a question regarding the discrepancies that may exist in the parking between what applicants, you know, would have to provide versus what's required by code. Internally, the department has been doing some research to figure out how we can update that, since it is a little bit outdated, just to see what we can work in providing. So we're looking at various cities in the area, and also what other uses we should be adding to that parking, to the parking requirements. And, well, you had a question about the exercise studios' size. It's thirty-one-thousand-and-forty-three square feet, and that was included in the justification statement on page thirteen. And you had a question, Mr. Fish?
Wait till you hear the tuition fee. Wait till you hear the tuition fee.
Okay, okay, perfect. All right, so I'll go through my presentation, and I'll get back to you, okay? Perfect. So it's a future land use and a rezoning. Pretty much, Joanie did a good job at going over what's required, so I'll just go through what I have. So just a brief history and background. So the subject area is part of the Shops at the Press development with a significant impact. It includes a lot of restrictions. Pretty much, it's a development regulating mechanism. So the change to a CPD would allow more flexibility on how the development is achieved. So with the analysis, the change from general Commercial to the CPD will increase the development potential within the subject area from zero-point-seventy-five FAR to one-point-five FAR, with a maximum development potential of three-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three-point-seventy-five square feet, going all the way to seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-seven, and, sorry, seven-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven-point-fifty square feet. And this is just a visual to show the existing CE designation that is along South Dixie on that parcel, and how it's going to change to be more consistent throughout. And the rezoning pretty much goes from GC to CPD. The proposed CPD will permit all uses permitted within the GC zoning, and incorporate schools, colleges, universities, and the public and private, and as a use that is permitted by right. And here's a visual of the rezoning from GC to CPD. And for the findings, the proposed CPD zoning is consistent with the future land use of Commercial East. It's compatible, and similar with the land use and zoning pattern in the area. It has met the rezoning standards of section- It has met the rezoning standards of Section 94-32 and the Commercial and Industrial Plan Development District provisions and requirements of the ZLDRs. And public notices were sent out to all owners within 500 feet 14 days prior. Signs were posted. I have the six pictures here of the six different signs on different portions of the site. And also, the ad was published as stated. So, staff recommends approval of Plan Board Case Number 1984 for the Future Land Use Map Amendment as it complies with Florida Statute Chapter 163. It also complies with the Future Land Use Policy 1.1.5 Change Assumptions. For the rezoning, staff is also recommending approval. It complies with Section 94-32A. Res zoning standards complies with Section 94-207D for Commercial and Industrial Plan Development District provisions and requirements. It complies with Section 94-486 Parking Reduction Standards. And that's it for me.
Okay, any questions of staff? Let me start on this side. Any questions? Go ahead, Patrick.
So, with the rezoning, obviously, there's a future potential for basically a doubling of the intensity, allowable intensity on the site. Does the waiver allow, does that stay with the property as long as the tenant is onsite, the parking waiver?
So, the FAR increases with the future land use?
Right, it would double.
From 0.75 to 1.5.
Right, so if they came back with a new proposal in the future to intensify the site further, the parking would be reevaluated at that time? And at that time, the waiver would also be reevaluated?
Well, they would have the waiver, but anything else they would have to request additional would have to be requested additionally to that. But if they're coming with a brand-new site plan, then essentially, everything would be looked at as that request.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I could just provide some context.
Sure.
You kinda touched upon it, but probably 20 or so years ago, we adopted an ordinance that required what is known as a development of significant impact. And basically, that was any project that had over 100 residential units or 50,000 square feet had to appear before this board for a review. We normally thought that something that large shouldn't be approved at a staff level. We should bring it forward. The number of DSIs we have in the city, probably you can count on one hand. I don't think we've had one in probably 15 years. But again, anything that triggered that DSI would have to come before this review. And the significance of the DSI was you had to meet every provision of the code. So, no waivers, you meant parking, you meant landscaping, you meant setbacks. Very difficult to do in our environment, particularly with all our urban infill projects. So, part of the reason the applicant is getting away from the DSI is to have that built-in flexibility that, again, you can assign particularly uses under the general commercial, any additional uses like, in this case, the schools and university. So, in the future, presuming this gets approved, any intensification or addition of square footage would have to come back as a major amendment to the plan development. So, that would come back. We would evaluate the parking, we would evaluate the setbacks, the landscaping, everything else. But really, the primary focus, and again, I don't wanna lose sight of the fact, is that they're getting away from the DSI and going to a plan development because it offers that flexibility.
Thank you for that, Mr. Green. Any questions? Will, go ahead.
Actually, come back to me, cuz Victor might-
Anyone else have any questions? Then we'll back to you.
All right. One question. So, going off of the map, Brian Garonnick's office is that upper corner, right? Is there any reason why it wasn't just made contiguous? Or is it because if a property owner wanted that, they'd have to request it?
You're speaking on the existing?
To the left behind Starbucks is Brian Garonnick's office, right? That's that little carve-out. So, I'm just asking a general question of if he wanted it, he would have to apply for it. It's not something-
Yes, he would.
Just for uniformity.
It's just for those two parcels.
I gotcha. Same with Publix across, right? That's the other C across the railroad tracks?
Yes, they're all individual, so they would have to request on their own.
Okay. And then, I don't know who's here from the public, so obviously, you know, I'm sure Elsid probably has some concerns about making sure that, you know, students aren't parking on their side streets if there is a potential for overflow or that. So, I guess a question really is, is, you know, policing of that area for proper parking?
I didn't receive any comments from the Elsid community.
You haven't? Okay, perfect. Cool, thanks.
Okay, all right. Any other questions of staff? Go ahead.
So, I know, I mean, I know that they do own the parcel to the east and the west of the railroad tracks. Is there a, cuz obviously, there's, they have mixed, properties that are mixed between Commercial East and Commercial already cuz they already are mixed. Is there any other property that has a Commercial East designation that's on the west side of the railroad tracks?
There have been. And there've also been properties that have inconsistent, that have split future land use. So, pretty much, they want to extend it on the properties that they own. So, part of our future conditions would be that they have some type of unity of title so that the parcel would read as one. So, so that it's not two separate parcels.
But currently, there's, if I read it correctly, there's two separate-
Two separate parcels, one ownership, so we would-
That's correct. But the eastern parcel is Commercial, right? It's designated Commercial, and the western piece is multifamily? Did I read that right?
No. So, it's all, it's all the same. So, they're all going to Commercial East from Commercial. Both parcels are going from Commercial to Commercial East.
So, right now, basically, part of their building is Commercial East?
Correct.
Like that sliver where the wellness place is and the hair salons and all the way up to Starbucks?
Is Commercial East.
And then Joseph's and beyond is Commercial?
Correct.
Okay.
Sam, that answer your question?
Maybe I'm just not reading it correctly. I'm looking at this table here where it says the parcel to the east is Commercial East, and it's general commercial zoning. But the piece on the west is zoned multifamily, and it's currently multifamily, it's MF 30, it's MF 20, so-
Because it's on the west past the Manso Road parcel. So, you're reading that brown parcel that's kinda cut off right here. This is MF. Do you see it?
And that's existing multifamily?
Yes.
That's technically probably on Parker, right?
Well, I don't, is that what this is? The, in the report I'm reading here, it says, maybe I'm not reading it correctly.
Right over the train track.
Not on there. It's right here. The brown right here? If you look at my screen? If you look at my screen, the arrow is on the multifamily component right here.
But that's not part of the parcel that we're talking about?
No, it's not.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, one last question. So, does the, with the change to CPD in Commercial East, would the elimination of the parking for another purpose require them to come back for some sort of variance or, right? That would be a totally different development if they were to change that use?
Yes. Well, so if the use is within the general commercial zoning district and is permitted by right, they don't have to come in. So, anything that is within GC or if it's the school, they don't have to come in and ask to be added as part of the CPD.
So, what are some things that could eliminate the parking without them having to come back?
So, any use that would increase the parking requirement. But we don't necessarily, if it's not new construction, we don't necessarily look at that as something that will trigger new required parking because it's an existing site and they're just proposing a new use.
Okay, but, I mean, anything to be built would be a new use?
Right, but they're not proposing to build any, adding any square footage.
Okay. Making sure.
Okay, any other questions of staff? Thank you so much. Would anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? And if you've not, if you've not filled out a card, if you could do so after you're speaking, okay?
Pardon me?
I said, if you've not filled out a card, then when you're done speaking, if you could please do so.
Oh, yes, of course. I'm sorry.
Please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name is Franny LaRue, and I live at 600 Manso Road in West Palm Beach, which is directly across the street from where you're speaking. And I was just wondering just a couple of things because I've noticed since the gym opened up in where Joseph's is that it's very hard to make a left-hand turn off Manso Road now onto Dixie Highway. And that's even gonna increase with all the extra traffic that we're gonna have. And also, along Manso, which is right across the street from my house and right next door to my neighbor to the west of that property, there's parking on the street. Is there a way that we could get that to be designated for residents, like placard parking, like they have on the island or something, so that we have that street parking access for our use as we always have?
You'll have to take that with staff. You're here just to offer testimony, we're here to hear it. But there'll be people who can maybe answer your question.
Okay.
Okay, was that all you had then? If there's, if you could speak with someone from staff, would anyone from the applicant wish to be heard to address her issue? Please come forward or staff, whoever. I think, I think it was the staff who was volunteering. I was looking at her, not you. You're looking at, go ahead. If you can address her question, then maybe meet with her afterwards.
Yes, we can meet with her. And in terms of the designation, it's public right-of-way, so that's probably not possible. That would be a discussion to have with engineering as well.
All right, so, ma'am, the staff will talk to you about that, but we're here to take testimony on the application itself. No problem, no problem, just wanna explain.
Don't let, don't let it happen again.
No, he's teasing, don't pay attention. Is there anyone else from the public who wish to be heard on this application? And if not, we're bringing back to the board. Does anyone have any concerns or about this?
Well, you know me, I'm always the parking hawk, right?
Say what you want to say.
No, I mean, it's PBA, right? And they've been very good neighbors. You guys have done a lot of things to make sure that whatever you do from a building perspective, you know, is functional and works with the city. And so, yeah, I mean, I use that, I go to Joseph's every day for lunch, and I join the gym there, and parking is difficult there already, right? So, I guess what I'll say for the record is that I'm relying on PBA's testimony of how they're going to manage this parking, how they're gonna operate their shuttles, and how they're gonna, you know, whatever, change class schedules or whatever to make sure that, you know, the parking doesn't become an issue for the neighborhood and for everybody else using that site, so.
Any other comments?
Actually, I do have a comment. I do have a comment about the, from the site plan. It looked like there was a road that connected the parking lot from Joseph's and that whole shopping center area that would cross over? Or is, did I read that incorrectly? As far as-
That's the pedestrian bridge, right?
It's just a bridge that connects it, correct?
I think that was from the other parking lot. Over there, a ridge, a pedestrian-
You can only access that parking lot from Manso.
Kind of in the discussion moment, but under the circumstances.
That is correct. You can only get to that parking lot from Manso. There used to be a vehicular connection across the tracks, and we worked with the city when we came in with the initial site plan. They actually wanted us to get rid of that, and there was some, you know, liability and safety concerns. So, we eliminated that prior vehicular connection.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other comments? Gene?
I may have missed this, but this is a question for possibly the applicant. Will PBA have designated parking spaces that are clearly marked, also requiring that students have a decal to access those spots, or is it open access?
I'll let Kurt respond to how they're gonna handle which students would be allowed to park there based on their maximum amount. But the city does not allow reserved parking when you use shared parking or waivers typically. They, they don't allow that. So, there wouldn't be curb stop, you know, there will stop saying PBA only, yeah.
So, that's correct. So, from a landlord standpoint, they have parking for the office building, and we're just using the office space like a typical tenant. So, we sell decals when we register the cars to the students. So, we're working through the color codes to say, okay, these are the decals for the PA students so that our security that makes rounds, the building team, it's, I think it's CB Richard Ellis that runs the management there or somebody close to that, to be able to say, hey, these cars are not in the proper parking. They should be across the way, right? I can tell you even, even, you know, not students, and these aren't regular students like a freshman that came to school. These have gone through undergraduate and have been, you know, we had 2,000 applicants for 40 spots, right? So, these are selective students that are coming. And they are not changing, I just want, you know, there's not like, you know, 40 come in for a class, and then they leave and another 40. These are folks that are coming and staying during the day. So, this isn't a typical college situation where I'm trying to figure out commuters and who's coming and going. So, we will sell the decals to the students that can park there, and that will be based on first come, first served. And then the balance will have to be parked off-site.
Okay, so how many students go to the school?
We have 2,600 undergraduate students.
No, 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 to the PA program.
Oh, 42.
We could've saved a lot of time because the 17,000 square foot number sounds like there's gonna be massive amounts of students there. Had you said that it's a 40-student program occupying a 17,000-square-foot space?
And that will vary a little bit.
You would've saved me and yourself 10 minutes of time.
Well, I'm not gonna, it'll vary a little bit based on seasons.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, when you were saying 17,000 square feet, I was like, okay, there's gonna be hundreds of students there.
And I'll share this too, and I know everybody, Harvey left, so he won't hit me up and say, you know, don't offer him for more information, right? But I will tell you this, out of the 17,000 square feet, a third or more is just staff, like office use, right? 23, you know, offices. So, that's just staff. They won't be there every day cuz our nurse practitioners come three days a week for certain hours, right? So, just a third of it's just pure office use, right? There's two classrooms, right? You know, like, so when we break it down, and also, I mentioned, when we first looked at it, under the code, I think vocational schools were allowed. So, we were like, oh, right, education. So, in reality, from the impact that was gonna be able to be there, a vocational school probably could have the same or more impact. So, we feel like it's been a great partnership to work on this property. We thank you for your questions, if I can answer any more, but I think that helped a little bit. We're not, we're not, and it is only our PA program. You know, there's been a strict regulation from accreditation standpoint that we have a space for them. And when we're all done, if this is approved, please stop by sometime, I'll take you to tour. It is a gorgeous site we have there, so thank you.
Thank you very much. All right.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I did wanna point out too, though, that the ability for the students' cars to have the decals will also aid in making sure they're parking in the lot on the west side. It'll be easy for their operational management team at the facility to track that.
All right, thank you so much. All right, then, I'm looking for a motion? I think we have two motions we'll need to be doing. Let's start with the first.
I move that the Planning Board recommend to the City Commission approval of the two-part request by Shane Broadmick of Urban Design Studio on behalf of Tricera PVP Property Owners LLC for the following Planning Board Case 1984 FLU 24030001, a small-scale future land use map amendment to change the FLU designation of 8.39 of the overall 11.57 acres of the subject area, consisting of two parcels located at 2751 South Dixie Highway. A small-scale future land use map amendment to change the FLU designation of 8.39 of the overall 11.57 acres of the subject area consisting of two parcels located at 2751 South Dixie Highway and 501 Manso Road from commercial to commercial east, consolidating the FLU designation. The most, motion is based upon testimony presented at the hearing along with the applications submitted and the staff report which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards of policy 1.1.5 of the City of West Palm Beach Comprehensive Plan.
All right, we have a motion, have a second.
Second paragraph, did you read the second paragraph?
And so there, are there conditions that I need to read or do I, am I reading 84A as well?
No, I think we need to take these separately. Mr. Thomas, can you assist us here? I think we need two, these are going to be two separate motions or, or is it combined? Okay, so on this motion, were there any conditions we need to read into the motion? No, okay, go ahead. So the motion stands and have we a second? Motion and second, any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Passes unanimously. We need a second motion now.
All right, I'll make the motion for 1984A. You need a second?
Is that, is that all you need to say? Was there anything more?
Well, there has to be a second.
That's right here. No, I think you do, oh, a second.
Perfect. I move that the planning board recommend to the city commission approval of a two-part request by Shane Broadmix of Urban Design Studio on behalf of Tricera PVP Property Owner LLC for the following. Planning Board Case Number 1984A RZ-24030003. A rezoning to change the zoning designation of the subject area consisting of two parcels of approximately 11.57 acres located at 2751 South Dixie Highway and 501 Manso Road from the general commercial to commercial plan development. And a request for a parking waiver from the zoning and land development regulations, ZLDRs. The motion is based upon the testimony presented at the hearing along with the applications submitted and the staff report which constitute competent substantial evidence. The planning board hereby makes findings of fact that the application complies with the required standards in section 94-32A and section 94-207D of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, ZLDRs. In addition, this recommendation is made subject to the conditions of approval contained in the staff report dated July 16, 2024. I move that these conditions are necessary to ensure compliance with the purpose and intent of the zoning and land development regulations and consistency with the comprehensive plan of the City of West Palm Beach.
Now that we have the motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that then brings us to code revision cases of which there are none. That brings us then to other business, unfinished business, new business. If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We stand adjourned.